All right, good evening, everybody. An exciting night here in the city of Royal Oak that happens only every two years. We're just so grateful that everyone could make it out tonight. I know the roads are a little icy. It's a Monday night. People have things to do, places to be, and we're just really grateful that you could share tonight with us as we send off the 51st Commission and welcome in the 52nd Commission. So it really is a privilege and honor of me to call to order the last meeting of the Royal Oak 51st City Commission meeting to order on this day, November 27, 2023. We're going to begin this evening with an invocation given by the Reverend Emma Nichol of the First Presbyterian Church of Royal Oak. Reverend Nichol.
(Inaudible) God of all that was and is and is to come, you who bear witness to this creation and accompany us throughout our lives, we give you thanks for the opportunity to gather this evening. Thank you for being in this space as we come together to offer our gratitude for the gift of service rendered, to celebrate the beginning of a new season of leadership, and to steward the activities of this city, that this might be a place where people from all walks of life can thrive and flourish. As we look out at a broken world, we ask for you to guide us and those who lead, both here in Royal Oak and much further out into the world, where there's discord and fighting, bring peace with justice and love; where there's grief and mourning, bring comfort; where there's misunderstanding and distrust, bring curiosity and dignity; where there's fear, bring light and love. As we look out at a world also marked by goodness and hope, we ask for you to give us eyes to see all that is beautiful and just and meaningful around us: the beauty of trees and parks, the joy of children playing on playgrounds, the devotion of public servants and first responders, the compassion of neighbors helping neighbors, the creativity of students and teachers, the awareness that we are all interconnected and that our lives are bound together in community. To those gathered here tonight, we ask your guidance and support as they create a strong foundation for this city and seek clarity, a vision for the future. In this meeting, offer good courage for the next steps on the journey. Grant us faith that your hand is leading us and your love supporting us. Grant us wisdom to discern and to live out our particular roles in this world you love so much. In your holy name, we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Touching words, Reverend Nichol. We appreciate you taking time tonight for your invocation for this commission. Thank you so much. This brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. We report to Macey.
A motion approval?
We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colwell. Discussion. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right. So that brings us to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is public comment. And I know many of you are here tonight. Many of you are experienced public commenters, but I will read just a few remarks here ahead of public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. We may make a small exception tonight with one particular commissioner if you want to say some nice things. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that we want to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. We all have email addresses, and you'll see us out in town, and often we get stopped and answer questions and help our fellow neighbors and community members as appropriate. Please note, the City Commission typically doesn't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll ask those questions when the topic is discussed or if the issue you have isn't on the agenda. Our city manager is also taking notes and looks into matters as appropriate. So with that, who wishes to be first tonight? Mr. Witz.
I have trained my son well. I am John Witz, and I'm involved in several fund projects around the city, and I wanted to make a couple of things about the rink at Royal Oak. There's some great events and promotion coming up this weekend. It's Skate with Santa, so check the website for different times on Internet. No listen. Thank you. Different times, Friday through Sunday. The following weekend, December 7th through 9th, we have a toy drive for the bottomless toy chest. If you bring a toy, you will get a discount, or free hot chocolate, rather, or marshmallow kit. So that is going on. There are some specials that are being added for Royal Oak residents that I wanted to share for all weekends where the price has gone up to $12. If you show your Royal Oak ID, it is $2 off, so it'll be $10 always for Royal Oak residents, and wanted to share that news. And also, thanks to M3 Investments in partnership with Royal Oak Schools. Then in addition to free skating for Royal Oak residents, every Tuesday, they have added five Wednesdays that are being promoted by Royal Oak Schools, which is going, starts this Wednesday, for free skating for all students. So those without IDs, just have your mom say you which school you go to, and you will be taken care of on many Wednesdays. So lots of good things coming, and just talking about the rink and the changes that have made, we've made a lot of structural changes. It really is sharp, if you haven't seen it, just platform decking and just, you know, just a lot of improvements in the position of things, and we've had great feedback. And it gives me a chance with my minute seventeen to say that it's very likely that the rink and many other good things in the city would not have been made possible without the vision of Commissioner Dubach. He asked a lot of questions. He has just been a great partner to work with. We have, you know, not always agreed on things, but this man has been fair, Royal Oak-focused, and just a true amazing servant that I will miss in that position. I was fortunate to receive a note to supporters indicating that he was not going anywhere, so many of us are counting on counting on that. But just getting to know you, your family, and it's just been amazing to work with Commissioner Dubach, and you will be missed, and no condition on the road was going to stop Tucker and I, right, buddy?
Yeah.
From getting out to say goodbye, wishing you well, and of course, best wishes to new commissioners, Becca and Amanda as well in their service, and Kyle, wishing you great in all, best in all pursuits, and hope that didn't violate too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witz. All right, who's next? Mr. Allison.
We start by saying the 51st Royal Oak City Commission has been a remarkable group of people. You faced the adversity of COVID. You've built parks, you've built new buildings, you've just been remarkably forward-thinking in everything you've done. I've been sitting at that horseshoe long enough to know that not one person does it. You guys all melded together as a group, and it's a combination of all your personal talents that made this city so remarkable it is right now. Kyle will be missed, just like Pat is missed. The contributions of both of you, I'll go with Pat first, I think Pat and I served together back in the early 90s, and so I would do all the time what she was capable of and what she could do. And she was a remarkable leader for you group of 51, of the 51th Commission, 51st Commission. And she, her memory will always be cherished, and her input and her contributions to the city will never, ever be forgotten. Kyle, you and I have served together for quite a while, and I always took you as a comrade, a colleague, someone who was not afraid to speak his mind, someone who was not afraid to buck the trend and go against the grain and speak his mind, and I always appreciated it. Unfortunately, what that brought for not only you, but for the rest of you is some real harping from the community that you had to put up with. I mean, I was sat here and watched enough meetings where people would come to this podium and actually call you guys names, make up stories about you, and I know you were tired for your $20. I mean, it's, you know, and, you know, I can't say Mike worked twice as hard, but he got $40. But no, in all seriousness, it's tough when you sit up there, and you've got to keep your mouth shut, and you've got to look at these people that are calling you all kinds of names, and just leave the table with a smile, and it is very tough. To Tara and the kids, it's tough to watch your dad get beat up on. So you've got to put up with that, too, and that's the same for any commissioner's family, any politician's family. I know my kids went through it, and my wife went through it, and I know Tara and the kids went through it, too, Kyle. You all stood in there. You're solid rock, family in it. So many good things have come about, and your wife and the kids have always been involved in what we're doing with this, with the city. And so first of all, I want to commend you for the job you've done, and then I want to thank you for everything you've given to the city of Royal Oak. You, like Pat, have left a big impression on this community, and your mark is all over there. So congratulations to you, blessings to Pat, the 51st Commission, congratulations for your job well done. The 52nd Commission, you've got a big role to fill, and I hope that you guys are as good as what you guys were. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Oh, I see a hand in the back. Pardon me.
Good evening, Commissioner Mayor. I'm Shelley Lake. I actually live in Troy, but my heart is in Royal Oak. The reason is I had a business here for 22 years, and I enjoyed every minute being in Royal Oak. My face is part of Blessings in a Backpack, and that's why I'm here tonight. I want to be, a letter wouldn't have served my purpose in thanking the Commission for all that you do and for allowing Blessings in a Backpack to receive a grant from the Community Opportunity Fund, which we are extremely grateful for. We'll be able to defer some of our costs. We buy our own food. We'll be able to defer those costs by use of this grant, and we hope to be able to purchase non-perishable milk that we will add to our backpacks. Last year, through another grant, we actually provide vegetables every week, so that made us very, very happy. It made the board happy, and especially my volunteers, who worry about us giving too much salt to children with ramen noodles. So on behalf of my board, and all my volunteers, and the students that receive the food every week during school year, we appreciate you very, very much and are thankful for the grant, and we bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lake, and thank you for all you do and all the volunteers that make Blessings in a Backpack possible.
You all get invited to our trivia night in April. Thank you.
Yeah, Tucker?
Yeah. I'm telling.
Okay, we'll go back here in the back corner, then.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Kim Johnson. I'm at 5070 Elmhurst. I am a lifelong Royal Oak resident, lifer as we refer to us as. I am coming to you as a co-founder of Teen Clean Closet. For those of you who will recall, we are a nonprofit that operates in Royal Oak that provides hygiene and toiletry items at no cost and in no questions asked atmosphere. We partner a lot with our Blessings family and whoever needs us. I too wanted to come before you and thank you for the opportunity when you created the community grant program and made ARPAFONS available to us. For many of us doing on-the-ground work, opportunities like this are infrequent, and we depend a lot on donation drives and individual donors and our families and friends and our neighbors and anyone we need at 7-Eleven getting coffee. So we wanted to thank you for taking the time to recognize what we do in our cities every day. I also wanted to just take a few minutes and give a special thanks to Todd Funton and Jill Martin. The grant process was a lot. I've done college semester on projects that were a little less daunting, but every time we had a question, they were there. They were there with prompt answers, and that was invaluable for us to get that application completed. So thank you to all of you and to them, and for the city for supporting all of the local nonprofits on the ground.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and thank you for everything that you do. All right, anybody else tonight? Is that Mr. Johnson? The other guy?
Ryan Johnson, 1103 Hoffman. I bought my house in 2011, which coincidentally was the same year that Commissioner Dubach started his seat on the commission. And it's not a coincidence that in that 12 years, my house value has tripled. So that is absolutely fantastic. So it's more of a question of the 52nd Commission. I'm expecting the same ROI. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. No, but in all seriousness, the transformation this city has made since I bought my place and how long I've lived here is fantastic. You guys all do great work. I'm not going to cry, so thanks for everything, Kyle.
Tara Maygar, 312 Fair Grove. I know you had said to not directly address specific commissioners, but there is a certain commissioner whose last day it is, and I have some grievances. For him or her. Number one, wouldn't let me borrow his parking pass even when it was super cold out, and I promised I was only going to pop into a place for a few minutes. Number two, wouldn't call in a favor to the city when our cat got stuck on top of the telephone pole, and our daughter was crying because we have to see how they respond to all residents. Number three, won't let me name drop to get a table on a Saturday night, even though I watch all three of his kids during these commission meetings and committee meetings and subcommittee meetings. And maybe if this meeting was televised, then we would be able to...
These are televised?
Like the entire 12 years? Okay, if you could just edit out my public comment before you broadcast this, then that would... This is live. The whole time. Thank you for your service.
Who wants to be next after that?
Dave Perush, 1624 Woodsboro, along with my daughters Kathy and Anne, my daughters, her daughters. We are here for a number of reasons. First, I stood before you a few months ago and said thank you to all of you. I want to thank you again on Pat's behalf. I want to thank the citizens of Royal Oak for all the trust they put in her in all those elections starting in 1979 and going forward to four years ago. I really want to stop and thank the staff of the city, past and present, for all of the support that she got from staff members, sometimes who didn't agree with her particular position, but gave her the support and the information that is necessary. It was unwavering. And since she entered her final illness, the staff has been just outstanding, particularly this person over here, Judy Davids, who helped her compose and put up on the city website thoughts on her final days, and helped us put together the memorial service. And finally, I want to thank this commission. You were among her favorites. She worked with you, she lived with you, she loved you, she disagreed with you sometimes, not always in the right position, but she enjoyed working with each and every one of you. She loved to serve with you, and she was honored by your comments and your action in naming the park in her name. We all sat and watched that committee, commission meeting with her. It was the last commission meeting she saw. Now, Pat and I were fortunate over the years. We had good employment. We had some relatives who had money who died and left it to us, so we had some funds that were available to us. Her first gifts, of course, were to the grandkids, and she has made those gifts. But you all remember at the memorial service, the request was those who wanted to make memorial gifts, Royal Oak Symphony and the Royal Oak Civic Foundation. Pat was never one to ask something she didn't do. She has made a final gift to the Royal Oak Symphony, and Ms. Davids, if you would come forward. This is her final gift to the Royal Oak Civic Foundation. We've been asked whether or not we have instructions for the gift. The gift is to be used for the benefit of the city. We would hope that the renovations to what's now Pat Perush Park and to centennial commons, any additions, those were special to her. Water Works Park, now Pat Perush Park, partly because you named it, partly because we took Olivia there many times and enjoyed it. Thank you all, and thanks to the city.
Dave and Kathy, that was really, really touching. And Pat's presence is felt here now, and we know it's going to be felt for a very long time, not just within these chambers, but throughout the entire community. We're so grateful that you shared so much of her with us and with the community. She just continues to surprise us, and we're so grateful for the gift that she left behind as well.
I have the great opportunity to administer the oath to both Commissioner Dubach and Commissioner Perush as they finished, as they began this term that's concluding now. And at the time, I mentioned, and I don't know if you recall this, about how we first, when we first met, we were just young, idealistic, hopeful citizens of this great community, hoping that we'd have our opportunity to make our mark. And, you know, what I've been really pleased to see is that same spark, that hope, that vision that you have, that you had at the time, you continue to have, and you fought, and you've managed to just, you know, do some incredible things here. And, you know, what I was hoping for when I saw you tonight, although this is the end of a chapter, all right, this is not the end of a book, this is the end of a chapter. I wanted to see if that same spark was there. So when we first had our conversation today, I could tell that there are many things, other plans that you have, other ideas, and so I don't, I don't feel like this is an ending. I feel like this is just another opportunity for you to figure out a way to serve the people of this community and make your mark in service. And so that was very, it's very nice for me to see that where we started, my friend, I'd like to think that we are continuing to make a mark, and my hope is that you'll continue to find ways to move people and serve. And it was hard for me to not, after hearing, to not, I felt compelled to come to the microphone to talk about Pat, because I've never met somebody in my entire life that was able to educate without being condescending, educate without being patronizing, you know, and when I say educate, educate adults, all right? And when you're educating children, of course, you're going to, in some way, be a little patronizing as you're explaining it, but she could educate adults in a way that made them feel totally fine about it. And I reflected on a time that, I see, I have strong feelings about the state of Ohio, and, you know, I have this vision of some sort of barren wasteland, post-apocalyptic kind of thing, and so I work very hard to get my gas if I have to travel through that state just before I leave the state of Michigan and make sure I have enough to get to wherever I'm going. So I made that comment one time on Facebook. Thank goodness I'm back. I made it safely back from Pennsylvania through Ohio, and then Pat took over my Facebook page at that moment and just said, "Well, I see that you have strong feelings, and you might not think that Ohio is very beautiful, but let me tell you about Cuyahoga Valley National Park and Hocking Hills." And I was thoroughly educated in a way that basically I felt better about it. I felt better about everything, about Ohio, about myself, and we were through all that. I don't know how that happened, but that was Pat. She was the truest of friends to me, to my family, to this community. I was so pleased that at the, at the memorial, that her passion for the things of the earth and nature were highlighted and that all of us were allowed to take a piece of her passion with us. And I'm proud to say that on my bench right now, there is a wonderful reminder of Pat with me always, so that in those moments when I might begin to lose my patience, I think of a person that I never saw lose her patience and ever be reminded of the great joy it is to serve. So I do think it's important to honor and salute the service of Commissioner Dubach, Kyle, and Commissioner Perush, Pat. It's a gift to be able to be here today and congratulate you in person, and to congratulate Pat every day that I think of her memory and be impacted by her vision service. She's simply the best. Thank you.
The young distinguished gentleman in the gray sweater and black hat. The young distinguished gentleman in the gray sweater and black hat, will you please approach the podium? That's one good-looking kid. Who's your daddy?
I just wanted to say that my dad is the best commissioner in the world.
Here's your gift to gab. That was very sweet, Jackson. All right, anybody else wish to come and speak at public comment? This will be the last public comment this evening and the last public comment for the 51st Royal Oak City Commission. So we've had a few grievances aired.
Live.
Live, on TV. All right, well, I'm going to close the public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Very grateful for those that came up and had some, some nice things to say and made some community announcements as well. As is tradition, as we close out the 51st Commission, there are some farewell comments that we'd like to make on behalf of the 51st Commission. And historically, we've always started with the mayor pro temp.
Really?
Yeah, it says it in my notes.
Lot of new traditions tonight, huh?
Lot of new traditions. But certainly, if anyone would like to make any farewell comments tonight to kick it off, we can, we can play it pretty casual. No, you're last.
You're last.
I was looking past you.
You go first.
I guess I can.
Okay. Commissioner Macy.
Feels like a lot of pressure. Well, I agree, first of all, with former Mayor Ellison that this was a really amazing commission. Like this, I mean, I don't have a lot of experience with other commissions. I only had one other commission, really, that I've served with. But the combination of intelligence and caring on this commission and the expertise that really kind of spanned so many, so many areas that we could bring it together for the, for the good of the city has been incredible. And so, of course, Pat, with her long experience and her ability to explain things without condescending, including to us so many times, I think all of us here at the table were like, okay, we're just going to see what Pat does and then we'll just all do that. It really brought something to this commission that I don't know that it has ever had before or maybe will ever have again, especially in addition with the depth of her understanding of the city and of its people and her historical knowledge that she shared with all of us and the city throughout her time, her tenure. And so, losing that piece of it and losing Kyle's piece of it as well, in this, makes it feel like it's going to be, there's some big holes to fill. So for Kyle and the expertise that he brings, but also his passion and his logical reasoning, the way that he looks at things with a very measured, a very measured air. So, right, he's, he takes the input in and is, and is, considers what's the right policy, what's the right thing for the people of Royal Oak, and then stands by that with a, with a passion, sometimes a little bit too much for the topic, if you ask me. But always, always thoughtful and reasoned and always somehow reminding us that we were being jerks for forgetting about the trees if we did for even one minute, which he didn't let us do. And so, it's a piece that's, it's just hard to, it's hard to get, I mean, you know what it's like at work when you are, you have this team that works together and everybody gives their piece. And so coming to this place where two people are leaving this commission and we're losing those critical pieces, it's hard to imagine. I'm very much looking forward to our new commissioners and the pieces that they will bring to this, but I'm sad to be, to be losing this very special commission. And I'm grateful to Commissioner Dubbuck for his service, for not telling me too often that I was stupid. And always with, with a kind glint in his eye. But it has been an honor and I have learned how to be a commissioner at this table because of you and because of Pat. And I appreciate all that you've shared with me and the city, and I wish you the best.
Mr. Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to start by, first of all, thanking everyone who came out tonight. This is, you know, we're here to celebrate so many things, celebrate the community, what's, you know, the grants we have just awarded. We're here to celebrate the commission that is seated right now, the new commission, and this guy who's leaving us tonight also. But I just, I am in awe every day of how amazing it is to sit and be part of this commission. We have done so much over the last two years, from finishing Centennial Commons, which now I think we all take for granted, but it wasn't that long ago, that was just a big hole in the ground. And that's something Pat really drove to, you know. Commissioner Perush loved Centennial Commons and the design of it and how it was shaping up. And so many people worked hard on that. But it's, it's hard, it's so much fun now. It's hard to forget, when this commission started, it wasn't completed. We've enacted a human rights commission. You know, that is something that's been decades in the making. This is, this is being talked about long, long ago, before my kids were alive, many of the kids, you know, before some of your kids were alive even. So this is pretty amazing. It's amazing, the environmental movement that we've made, which I know Commissioner Herzog will continue to push on us as we move forward. You know, the ordinances on trees, you know, Commissioner Macy mentioned trees, you know, Commissioner Dubbuck has really led a fight on preserving trees and it's been an issue that's been important to all of us on this commission. We understand the importance of it. And, you know, finally think about how we spent our money, we allocated $20 million for the betterment of this community. That just doesn't happen overnight, it took a lot of hard work on staff in particular. It took public outreach, it took us coming together to figure out the best way to spend that. And I think we're very creative in making sure it's the right mix of infrastructure, environmental, and then giving back to the community through nonprofits. So I just, I thank all my fellow commissioners up here. It's been such a joy and pleasure to work together. Like Commissioner Macy said, we all bring a little something different to the table. Contrary to some popular belief, it is not a unified mind at all times. The arguments are fun, though. We are all respectful of each other when we disagree, because there's not a single person up here that I believe isn't up here for the betterment of this community. So it's, it's fun to have disagreements together, because it usually leads to better product for the citizens of Royal Oak. So then, in closing, also, Commissioner Dubbuck, yeah, I just want to thank you. You've been, you've been quite the thought leader on this commission. You've pushed us in many, many different ways, usually right, sometimes wrong. You know, when I have an idea and I want to do something on the commission, it usually takes me about two weeks to call around, try to talk to enough friends. When Kyle wants to do something, you just see the glimmer in his eye and he could do it at that meeting. It could be done, he has an idea and he can accomplish, accomplish it. He often likes to point out, he's never had a resolution fail at this table. I've had many fail. But that's because he's that good. Kyle is good at policy. It's because he's good with his principles. I mean, he knows he's true to himself and he's true to the city. So I will miss you up here most of the time. But it's, I, I'm excited for you to continue working for the city in some way or another, because you really do make Royal Oak a better place for my kids, for your kids, for everyone who lives here. So thank you for, you've made me a better commissioner and I just want to thank you for that.
Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I have served alongside Kyle Dubbuck for 10 of his 12 years on this commission. And as others have said, we have accomplished so much in that period of time. Normandy Oaks Park, the Civic Center where we sit now, with Centennial Commons across the street, Kyle served on that committee. Our Sustainability Plan, which is the envy of cities. I serve on regional committees and people will sit next to me and say, "Oh, you're from Royal Oak? Your Sustainability Plan is great." And part of that is attributable to Ms. Herzog, who will be joining us here shortly to further champion that. I'm also proud of our Aging in Place Plan. And again, Ms. Cheesem, who was an advocate for that, will be joining us at the table and, and joining me to advance that cause as well. But certainly sustainability was at the heart of, of everything that Kyle did. As others have said, he made me a better commissioner. Even when we disagreed, it would help me refine and tease out my arguments. We voted against each other often enough to put, to make a lie, those that say in the public that we always vote in lockstep, because I assure you, we do not. All of Kyle's decisions were based on principle. He's an enormously principled person. He was the, he was the driver of many of our policy initiatives that address fairness and equity and honesty. And it all comes from a place of passion with him and you see that in everything he does. And the policies that we've put in place, the systems that we've developed, the places that we've built will be the foundation of the values for the next commission and for the future of our city. And Kyle, I thank you for that.
Commissioner Hahn.
So I'm grateful for this body that I sat with. I was, you know, I was kind of dropped into this seat about three years ago and I was able to learn, you know, so much from all of you. You've been a wealth of knowledge. I'm grateful that I had your compassion and the ability to learn from you. You know, this is probably the, my favorite commission that I've sat on, just because it's my only one. But I thank you all very much for everything that you've given to the community of Royal Oak. You know, everyone is passionate about the city, they want what's best for the city and it's clear in the work that you do on a daily basis for the city that you're here to make it better. But for Kyle, you know, it's been a pleasure serving with you. The historical knowledge that you have makes everything that we do here make sense. I knew right off the bat when, you know, the first time I spoke with Kyle, that he's a champion of fairness and of equity and of progress. And it shows in the work that you do. So I thank you so much, Kyle.
Well then, performance review, solid three out of five. I mean, that's, that's above average, you know. Two and a half is, you know, sort of the baseline. You know, this commission was really special. It was one of a kind. And it's certainly been a tough year with the loss of our dear colleague, Pat Perush. We miss her every meeting, every day. And it'll be tough not to have her here as a mentor, advisor, and as a friend as we transition into the next commission. I feel so blessed to have been able to serve with Pat and grateful for her mentorship and friendship. She was a catalyst, she was a crutch, and she was a compassionate leader that helped make this community what it is today. Her spirit will be felt for a long time and help guide our new commission that will be sworn in later tonight. Her absence is immeasurable and we're going to feel it for a very long time. But we have two new leaders that will be sworn in here shortly. And I know that they had an opportunity to know Pat and that they will lead with her spirit and with her mentorship and with her way as we swear in the next commission. Kyle and I were first elected back in 2011. It seems like such a short time ago, but really it is a long time. Not just because I can see that your beard has changed color a little bit.
A lot.
But, you know, to put it into context, Kyle has spent 27 dot 27% of his life serving on the Royal Oak City Commission. That's like 46% of his adult life, maybe even more if you ask his wife when he actually became an adult. And during this whole time, he has taken his duty very seriously. Something special began to happen when Kyle was first selected. It was clear from the first day, he was sitting at the table, he was here for all the right reasons. And I think we heard that from a number of people here tonight. He's a very principled person. His experience working in the Peace Corps in Niger, I'm not sure if you guys know, Kyle, Kyle worked in Niger at the Peace Corps. For those who don't know, he was, he was in the Peace Corps in Niger.
I don't talk about that much.
And he worked as an advocate for people with disabilities and he had years of nonprofit legislative experience that he brought to this table and we hit the ground running. And he became an instant asset to this commission. Ahead of tonight, I gave some thought of what we've accomplished together over the past 12 years. And frankly, it was exhausting. Kyle, you helped usher in a new and productive era in Royal Oak. Our city went from debates about dancing permits to civil rights, financial stability, environmental stewardship, economic development, upgrading our infrastructure, upgrading our roads and parks, planting trees, supporting small business, and keeping people safer than ever before. And we could not have done this without your leadership, Kyle. Without question, you're the type of person that should hold public office. You're smart, wise, and often direct. At times, you push back on us, but this made the entire body stronger and fueled the debate we needed to achieve the best possible outcomes for our constituents. You're an example of not how, not only to think with our heads, but also with our hearts. And when it needed to be said, we could always count on Kyle to say it, sometimes with an edge, but always from a place of love. Although Kyle is moving on, I doubt that his kind advice and insights will completely go away. I remember back in the day, 2011, we were campaigning and I knocked on a door and the person answered the door and looked at me confused and said, "You were just here." Kyle, you'll always be here, because you've done so much for this city and your work will live on for generations. It's been a great privilege to serve with you, buddy. You leave behind a legacy and example that you should be incredibly proud of. The positive impact you've left on this community is immeasurable. I'm proud to call you a colleague and friend. I'm going to miss serving up here with you, buddy. Thank you for everything. All right.
Want me now?
Yep. And then, and then we're going to have.
I see you all trying to make me feel feelings. I got things to say. So, yeah, it's been a really long 12 years, but it's still, it does not feel that far in the past that we were just getting sworn in to sit at this table. That was in 2011 after a hard-fought campaign that was really about wildly different visions for our city. And looking back, you guys have named a lot of it, like the things that we've done, we've done in this commission and the commissions that came before it, have radically changed the direction and the quality of life for everyone in the city. I opted not to run this year to focus more on some of their personal and professional responsibilities, you know, my kids are getting older and everything, but also to make way for some really exciting new leaders who I'm thrilled to, you know, see becoming commissioners tonight when they get sworn in. But I do want everyone to know, like, you know, how honored I've been for this opportunity. And you guys messed me up. To have been elected three times by my friends and neighbors, you know, throughout the city to serve as a voice for community is, you know, something I'll carry with me forever. But before I say goodbye to elected office, for, for now at least, I do want to reflect on some of the things we've done together, and it's a lot, so buckle up. When I first ran for office, you know, like just about all their communities, you know, Royal Oak was still reeling from the impact of the Great Recession and the housing crash. And someone mentioned it, the majority of the commission at the time, they were up here debating who was allowed to have dancing in the city of Royal here debating who was allowed to have dancing in the city of Royal Oak. That's what was going on. It was in the papers. It was on the news. It was embarrassing. We had real things to deal with, and that's what the majority of people were up here caring about. So it was clear that we needed a new direction of city leadership, at least for the majority of voices that were at the table at the time. They were debating if a bar could have 12 bar stools instead of 11, and did that make them a bar or restaurant? These were real conversations. Meanwhile, the city's budget was taking damage like every other city around. So I ran, and I ran with this guy, actually, got mistaken for each other quite a bit. And we took our seats at the table and totally changed the dynamic and it changed the conversation. And in the years since, with the support of this body and the residents of Royal Oak, over and over again, we've done so many cool things. You guys have already gone over so many of them, but first and foremost, we invested in public safety, and the city got into a dangerously low place with staffing levels and public safety, and previous commissions refused to consider asking the residents to dare invest more in the city. But we did. We made the case, and we asked the residents. They overwhelmingly supported it and have continued to support it, because they see the results because we were one of the safest cities in the state and in the Midwest. We increased, it's not sexy, but residential construction standards, because we had a housing building boom, and we wanted to make sure we were protecting quality of life. This is what the job is, is looking at where there's a problem and just making it better. We enacted a human rights ordinance to protect our LGBTQ brothers and sisters when state law wouldn't. And like many of the other things we've done, it was challenged by a small group who spread some fear and misinformation, and Royal Oakers stood up again and did the right thing. We established the Commission for the Arts, which brought so much beauty and joy to the city, art explore, outdoor pianos, concerts in the park. We prioritized environmental sustainability, which you've heard much about, and which has been championed by the Environmental Advisory Board, who really made a really strong advisory body. It was born out of being the Solid Waste Renewal Committee, and it's really an incredibly influential body of experts who are really helping us lead the way in, yeah, aggressive tree planting, but really the building of our SCAP, which lays a pathway forward for generations now. We improved communications, like using social media better, with substantially upgraded website, and often emails for all different issues that people can follow now and track them. We repurposed a greatly underutilized Norman Dukes Golf Course to make one of the crown jewels of our beautiful network of over 50 parks, on top of substantial investment and renewal of all of our parks, which was desperately needed. We secured a historical designation for the farmers' markets and ensure that it's going to be here for generations to come. We attracted hundreds of millions of dollars in new business investment, in a way that other communities just dream of, the kind of interest that we're getting. And at the same time, we raised the bar and said, "We're going to establish a community benefits policy so the developers can look forward to things that propose to fill a need in our community and add to the quality of life for our residents." And that's really just an abbreviated list. And much of that was done by this body, much of it built up over time where we were kind of the final word, but all these things have been a work in progress, and they're all yielding benefits for our residents every day. And none of it was easy. Leading is hard, and it takes patience and humility and an open mind and open ears and strong values and clear vision, and throughout my time, I've strived with varying degrees of success to exemplify all these characteristics. But I've had the benefit and the privilege of serving with so many others who brought these virtues to the service every day, each of whom approached their leadership role with a positive vision and insight and talent and time and a sincere dedication to leaving the world better than they found it. And that's what brought these positive results and so many more. And some of those I served with are no longer at the table, but left their mark on the city in such a positive way, Commissioner Jim Razor, Commissioner Jeremy Marley, Commissioner Carla Genotti, Commissioner Marie Donigan, who we think I saw here tonight, Commissioner Dave Polton. While we all certainly had our disagreements, we had no problem finding common ground in our shared love for the city, and I was proud to serve with them. And they each played these key roles in fostering this ongoing success that we're enjoying now, as did City Manager Don Johnson and City Attorney David Gillum, who navigated us just expertly through some of the city's toughest challenges and the toughest times that we faced in recent memory. And there's, of course, Mr. Royal Oak back there, former State Representative, Mayor, Commissioner Jim Allison, who was here at the table, fighting for a more progressive vision for the city, sometimes on his own for years. And even in that hostile environment, he steadily moved things forward, helping forward to the foundation that we're continuing to build on today. And during my time at the table as mayor, we learned a lot from Jim, just about the history of the city and what our residents care about and how to talk about these issues in a way that's really relatable. He always brought a strong historical perspective, but he also an equally strong vision for the future. And this wonderful fellow did not belabor a conversation, because he could count noses and just call for a vote, and we'd be done with it. But I also had the honor of serving with Commissioner Perush, who we probably not going to be able to talk about again, who we lost earlier this year, but as I've tried to say before, that was literally everything a public servant should be. She was optimistic and sympathetic and open-minded and beyond knowledgeable and witty as hell and values-driven and honest-to-God kind, in a way that just is uncommon. And she was a friend and a mentor. She made us all better. I would be the commissioner I was or the person I am while the privilege of serving with her and her friendship. So thank you for sharing her with all of us. To my current commissioners, I have such tremendous respect for you all, and I agree, this has been a special body to serve on. We've achieved so much, we've had such thorough and thoughtful debates, Commissioner Cole, Commissioner Macy, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Hunt. I just really value the different perspectives and expertise each one of you brings. I love when we have disagreed. I love the deliberative process. I love the debate, and I love that we've done it in a way that shows that we can have a policy debate without the hot rhetoric and personal attacks and sensationalism that's become such a common language in our politics. We've done that, and we respect each other even when we are diametrically greatly opposed on an issue. So I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to serve with all of you, but even more so to know all of you personally and call you all friends. And I know that I can be a lot sometimes, but I see you all, and I know you see me for my strengths and my shortcomings, and I value that. And the things we've done here together are going to benefit generations to come, and I can't imagine a better group of people to be sitting here now as I step away. That is, of course, with two new additions being sworn in this evening, Commissioner -elect Herzog, Commissioner-elect Cheesem. Congratulations. Congratulations, Commissioner, on your reelection as well. But the two of you joining the table tonight, thank you for stepping up to serve. It's hard, but it's worth it. I know I've spent quite a bit of time celebrating the progress we've made, but make no mistake, there's still a lot to do. So you're not going to want for issues to solve in a modern city. And I know you know that because you stepped up to help. So I wish you good luck and great success in your first term at the table, and you know where to find me if you ever need to talk. How am I doing? It's been a challenging, interesting, at times fun, but more often than that, just really rewarding time that we've spent together at the table. I've been up here with varying degrees of time with everybody here, and I love you. Mike, we were elected together back in 2011 after realizing people thought we were the same person, so we were getting credit for knocking doors when the other was knocking doors, which was very helpful. But I just really enjoyed sitting here with you, and I greatly respect the honesty and sincerity with which you approach public service. You're cool in times of pressure, thoughtful and sincere in times of confusion, and handsome at all times. And everybody likes that. So you approach leadership with a sense of duty and service for all the right reasons, and I will miss sitting next to you, although I'm under no illusions that will spare me from your dad jokes. I also want to recognize the incredible city staff and thank them. Our staff are the ones who really show up to work every day and make our city what it is, from the Clerk's Office to our amazing police and fire departments and our DPS crews who keep literally everything running, the Treasurers' Office of Planning and Building and City Attorney and City Manager's Offices, and a name I forgot to write down while I was driving this down. But we have such an awesome group of unsung heroes who are here to make the city work for the residents every day, and all the things that we're celebrating, like all these victories that we might have conceived and debated and then voted into existence, they actually had to make them happen. And they show up every day to make them happen, and they do it well, and do it with a sense of pride in the city that they represent. And I have never been anything less than impressed with the output of our staff, understanding, especially the restraints of a modern city. But we have such incredibly talented and dedicated people who take pride in the work. So thank you, City Manager Brick, and to the whole team at the city for making Royal Oak the wonderful place it is to call home. I know we get to do a lot of chest slumping and taking up the credit, but we're actually not the ones on the ground making the things happen. I also want to recognize my family for supporting me in this endeavor. I've missed birthdays and games and family events. My wife has always supported this service with a passion equal to my own and a love for the city equal to my own. But thanks also to everyone who's supported my being up here, everyone that knocked a door or wrote a check or came to an event. And lastly, I want to thank the residents of Royal Oak for the chance to serve and for standing by me over these 12 years. At times, I've been truly actually overwhelmed, like I am right now, by the outpouring of support from friends and family and neighbors. Forever grateful for the faith that the voters of Royal Oak kept putting me time and again. We live in really challenging political times where name-calling, extreme rhetoric, conspiracy theory pass for political discourse, anger and lieu of ideas, and sadly, it often works, but not here. It hasn't worked here in Royal Oak, where our voters consistently reject these tactics. Year after year, in the face of misinformation and manufactured outrage, Royal Oakers continue to support a positive, authentic vision for a brighter future. I want you all to know that amidst the highs and lows of elected service and heated campaigns, that continued support has kept me going and served as a constant reminder of our shared values and the importance of the work that is being done here in forging a better world for the next generation. So it's been an incredible honor to have been chosen three times by the voters to help lead our city. While I'm stepping away, you can be sure I'm not going far, and I'll remain a constant advocate for a positive vision for our city. Thank you all for letting me sell the words and for standing with me and for all the kind and generous words that you said about me this evening. I greatly appreciate it, and I will carry that all with me forever. Thanks.
All right, we have a couple special, maybe two or three, I won't say surprises for Commissioner DeBuck tonight. I'd like to ask Congresswoman Haley Stevens to come up here, as well as Board Chairman David Rupert. They also appreciate your service.
Oh, yes.
So in 10 and a half hours, I'm on a flight back to Washington, DC, and I really could not think of a better way to close out my one-week stint in Michigan when they led us home from voting with the citizens of Royal Oak and at this commission meeting. You all truly give Oakland County something to brag about, and it is the dedication of hard-working city commissioners, a mayor, city support staff, and residents. Not every place dedicates themselves to diversity, to equity, and inclusion in the way you do so thoroughly here. We were knocking doors, and of course, everyone was talking about sustainability. Everyone was talking about climate, and that is something that my colleagues in Washington, DC, need to know about. The 51st, do you call it session? That's what we call it in Congress, of the Royal Oak City Commission has absolutely been dynamic, and it has been worthy of the accolades, and it has been worthy of the imprint that you are leaving on this incredible city. It is remarkable to see the Peruk family here. As admirer of Pat, thank you for the donation and showing up, as I know you will continue to do so, and we will continue to show up for your family and the memory of your wife and your mother. I have a proclamation for Kyle from the Congress for Commissioner DeBuck. I'm going to read it, but I want to say something first. I got to Congress in one of the most long-shot ways possible. Like, a lot of people didn't think it was possible. A lot of people didn't take my phone call. I was trying to flip a seat at the time. It included Claussen and Birmingham, but none of Royal Oak. Now I'm so pleased to finally represent Royal Oak. That 14-mile stretch was always kind of bizarre, not having any of Royal Oak in the district. And Kyle absolutely had my back in the most steady and stable way you could ever want someone to support you. And it's not just about me. It was about sending progressive democratic values to our Congress, to stand up for gun safety and to stand up against gun violence, to champion climate issues, to champion a woman's right to choose, to do something for his children. Even though you couldn't vote for me, Kyle, you knew that I would be voting for you and your family and frankly, all the residents of Royal Oak in this great state and this great country, because that's what it's about. And you're right that there is a poisonous rhetoric in our politics right now. People don't make it easy. The rage politics that sees through seemingly too much of everyday life. Never underestimate the words of Margaret Mead. All it takes is a small group of dedicated citizens to change the world, and indeed, that's all that ever has. Your friend here mentioned moving to Royal Oak right when you became a commissioner, and I want to say something about that, because 2011, this country was not out of the woods of a Great Recession. We needed good people to stand up and put their hands up to run. We didn't know what was to come, that it'd only get harder because of the rage and the vitriol and the fighting and the this and the that, but we needed good people to right the ship. When this country was steering calamity off a cliff, when Michigan was absolutely the nader of the Great Recession, Royal Oak was not immune to what was going on. There's a reason why you got that house at such a great price in 2011, okay? You don't talk to Mayor Fournier, who's in automotive, like many of you. Our auto industry and our manufacturing sector was steering off a cliff. Kyle put up his hand to be in public service. I don't even want to know what the balance sheet looked like of this city. I don't even want to know what the balance sheet looked like of this city. Because it was a different time, right, Jim?
Yeah.
And at the same time, you're trying to build equity. You're trying to build a safe space for our LGBTQ friends. You're trying to talk about the things that people didn't even know how to talk about. And you found a way to do it, and you led, and you made a major difference. I am so proud to call you a friend. Period. I can't wait to see what's next. I really like your significant other, by the way. She's just fantastic. But now for the good stuff. Now for the official stuff, because this is cool, okay? This is a proclamation from Congress, a proclamation from Congresswoman Haley Stevens on behalf of the 118th Congress. So we're kind of like beating Royal Oak by a few sessions here of the United States Congress. We honor Mr. Kyle Dubach upon his retirement from the Royal Oak City Commission. Let it be known, he served for a long, good time, folks. Mr. Dubach has been a longtime leader in the city of Royal Oak and Oakland County, Michigan, and he has served the city of Royal Oak for more than 12 years. And during this time, he has served on the Environmental Advisory Board, the Senior Citizens' Advisory Committee, and the Commission for the Arts. And Mr. Dubach has accomplished many things in his time on the Royal Oak City Commission, including enacting a human rights ordinance to protect all of Royal Oak residents, increasing funding for revitalizing Royal Oak parks, and working to make Royal Oak a leader in environmental sustainability. And whereas, he has been an engaged citizen, volunteering with the Multiracial Unity Living Experience at Michigan State University and serving several years, in case you didn't know, with the Peace Corps in the country of Niger. And Mr. Dubach will participate in his final city commission meeting, as we all are bearing witness, dedicated citizens of Royal Oak, at this meeting on Monday, November 27, 2023. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, Mr. Kyle Dubach will be honored for his dedication to the city of Royal Oak. And I knew something was up when I walked in and I saw Dave Woodward. Not every city council meeting, commission meeting, has the chair of the Oakland County Commission here, but you know, here he is, folks.
All right. Give it up for Haley. There's only one person that can... So my voice is going to sound a little weird. I have two craters in it, two wisdom teeth pulled out earlier today. But we show up to talk about the important things, because the important things matter. We have a proclamation because this commissioner has done so much. I'm going to talk a little bit about the personal meaning he's had in my life. But most of the people in the city do not see the work that he does day in and day out for the city, for people across the state, in partnership with the county, in partnership with leaders across Michigan, to live into his values. It's been mentioned up here. I don't know if there's a more principled man that I have met in public service, because as a man who leads with his principles in his personal life, it is in his professional life, and has shown up every day in his public life, to the point sometimes, as the elder statesman here, that I'm like, you're going to do what? And it always fouled, if it was worth doing, and you have to put up with all this stuff of doing the right thing, then you just need to do the right thing. It's been talked about. I've never seen someone be able to structure an argument so clear and concise, even when there's an easier way to structure that argument, to get it done with less fanfare and less opposition and all those things. To hell with it. If it's worth doing, it's worth saying, and we're going to do what we say we're going to do. Because this leader understands it's not just about getting elected, it's about what do you do when you're part of this incredible commission to make change happen. Some of the things I just want people in this room to realize, I had an opportunity to bump into Kyle and Tara, I mean, pretty happenstance. I was coming in to deal with a much bigger problem, and they just happened to be in the room when that was happening. And I knew at that moment, there was something, that we clicked. I got a firm understanding of who he is at a surface, because it's how he shows up. It's how he shows up for his kids, it's how he shows up for my kids, it's how he shows up for the city every single day. When he made the decision not to run, and he and I had talked about it, he brought it up casually, and I'm like, when you make that decision, it'll be the right decision for all the right reasons, which he shared today. It is something that I wanted to make certain that everyone here knew of the role, the hard work that he puts in, not just fighting for the city and making sure that we're advancing with good policy. We have a water resource fund to help low-income people in all of southeast Michigan, because this man put in the time and energy outside the call of duty to help make that happen with me. When the pandemic landed, it was one of the very first calls. He says, we have to move resources. And like, well, we have some resources, we think coming. How do we move it fast enough? And his professional work with United Way for Southeast Michigan, if it wasn't for Kyle, we wouldn't have moved tens of millions of dollars in literally 90 days to get to the front lines, to where people needed, where communities needed, and all of those things. And every step from there became the model. People around the state were asking me, how did you move all these resources that fast? It's because Kyle brought those policy chops that many people were talking about today. It's so long-term. It is bold. It gives everyone around him the courage to be able to fight for more, to take the next step. And he did that every single time. I'm going to miss you up at this table, but I also know all the wonderful good trouble we're going to get into. And so, on behalf of Oakland County, on behalf of the county executive, Dave Coulter, myself, the colleagues on my county commission that represents Royal Oak, Commissioner Penny Lube, and Charlie Cavell, myself, we want to present this proclamation to you for all your service. I don't need to read it. On the back, there's another proclamation, one that I wrote. Kind of kidding. But it is, I want to recognize your service. I love you, man. I love everything you've done. Going to miss you up here, looking forward to the next chapter. And to the mayor of Royal Oak, the one, the only, the fabulous and re-elected Mike Fournier.
Thank you, Chairman Woodward, and thank you, Congresswoman Stevens. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Kyle, I don't know if you have any words you want to say. You're all set? Okay, I figured he left them all out there. We are, I'm going to ask also Dave Perush and Kathy and Ann to come up here for a little bit. We have a couple city plaques to also present to Commissioner Dubach and to, on behalf of Commissioner Perush. I'm going to set this down right here. You should have brought a briefcase. And Kathy, Dave, we can't say enough about how much we loved your wife, your mother, the grandmother to your children. She was very special and was noted tonight, many decades of service to the community that lit a spark for the positive change that we see today. She's greatly missed, but her legacy is tightly embraced, and we feel it and see it every day. And we wanted to present you with this plaque for Commissioner Perush's service and grateful appreciation for the dedicated services to the city of Royal Oak on behalf of the Royal Oak City Commission. It's made out of oak, very relevant, and we're just so grateful that you shared so many years and so many hours and so much time of your mom and of your beloved wife with this commission. Just know that it was worth it. She made an impactful difference in all of our lives, and more importantly, she made an impactful difference in this community that will last for a very, very, very long time. You know, if you come back like Pat did, we might be able to get you a bigger one. Okay? We just didn't, all these accolades tonight, we got to make sure that you go home to Tara in a relative state, not an overinflated state. Kyle, this is a plaque for your service, also made of oak, and grateful appreciation for the dedicated services to the city of Royal Oak. 12/5/2011 to 11/27/2023. It's a long time. We've said a lot of words tonight. We hope you can display this proudly in your office, your living room, wherever you see fit, because you should be really, really proud of what you've done, the service you've given, and the difference you've made in everybody's life, both big and small. So it's my privilege to hand you this plaque. You're welcome. And, yeah. Oh, and yes, buddy, we know you love Whittier Park.
I do.
It's a good time. We've thrown some baseballs out there, hit some baseballs with your kids and everything like that. So this is a tree we planted on your behalf in recognition of your service. You can tell there's two different pictures. Ms. Davids. Ms. Davids was really smart to take a picture of the tree when it had leaves and it was green and it was nice. And then here's the plaque here. Like I said, it's tough, you said it yourself, it's tough to be a leader. It's tough to always lead with your principles. And I think, you know, folks that play in that park, your kids, maybe your grandkids one day will see that mighty oak there and know that, you know, public service is still a worthy thing to do, it's still worthwhile, and that the example you leave will hopefully spread like the acorns from this tree one day.
All right. Thank you, buddy.
And we have another special presentation for you. Ms. Davids, do you want to hold the microphone for me? Because this is going to require a little maneuvering here.
Is there something for each year of service?
This is from city staff and the Royal Oak City Commission. This is a key to our city that has a little charm on it that says your name as well as your years of service. And we hope that you can also display this proudly, or if you ever have problems getting into City Hall, this might work on the scanner. I'm not sure if it works for getting out of parking tickets, but we'll find out. And so, it's my pleasure and honor and privilege to... I'm going to put it on you. You know it. Now, who's the most handsome one in the room? It fits you well. Love you, Kyle. All right.
I think we need to do a picture to commemorate the key, Kyle.
Should we do one last picture of the 51st Royal Oak City Commission? And thank you for everyone for bearing with us tonight. I know based on the agenda, it looks like it was going to be a short meeting, but... Should we do it up there or down here?
There in the box.
Do we have chairs down?
Let's do it down here.
The chairs are still...
Tighten it up just a little bit. There you go. Ready? Nice. Good?
Yeah.
It's going to be a tough one, buddy, without you. We got some really good people coming. All right. Like we said, this is a very special commission and with great, you know, appreciation, we won't say remorse or sadness, with great appreciation for the time we've had together. We will adjourn this commission and with great excitement, we will start the next Royal Oak City Commission, the 52nd Royal Oak City Commission. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Commissioner Dubach. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Colo. Any discussion on the adjournment of the 51st City Commission? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We're adjourned.
You want to go now?
Yeah, we're going to call security to ask our chief.
Get his charge passed.
We cancelled his pass, right?
Take his passes?
Yeah.
His key?
Can we give him a charge just for one night?
Just like away now.
Get this man a box. We'll be back down there in a second to join you, Kyle. I'm going to ask that the Honorable Derek Mineke and the Honorable Andrew Holkowski come up here to begin the swearing-in of the 52nd Royal Oak City Commission. So I think we can all probably...
You guys can call the order.
We will, I believe, do the swearing-in, and then we will call the meeting to adjourn.
Was it number eight? Or number eight?
Mine says call the order.
Hey, Lisa.
Commissioner Colo's wrong. I'm just a Commissioner Dubach. What should I say?
I'm just kidding. You are right.
Okay. So 51st, do you want to sit up here? Or do you want to come down there? It's all up to you.
What? You and Monica have to go down there, right?
Yeah, I guess you guys could sit.
Why don't you tell us what we're here?
Get sworn in, and then we'll talk.
All right. Well, I just thought it'd be nice if the whole 52nd came up at once.
Let's all go. Come on. That's what the mayor wants.
Do what?
I don't know what to say, but walk away. My guess was to...
No, it's okay. You guys can sit up.
Literally, that's what we would do. I'm not going to swear in.
All right. Your family should definitely come up. And if you please put your hand on the Bible, it depends on what you'd like to do, but the family usually holds it.
Okay.
Okay. There you can hold it. There you go. Wow. All right. So you'll just, yeah, there you go. All right. Actually, before I do, go ahead and put your hand down for just one moment, please. Before I do the oath, I actually, the first time I had a chance to meet our new Commissioner Cheesem was out on the campaign trail. She was working my street, and I was impressed just on that brief encounter in two different ways. One, she was, she had come just from a door that I think was a tough door and said, I just, I had a tough conversation. It didn't go as well as I would have wanted. And what I saw in that moment, though, was humility, like the willingness to reflect on, you know, how I could have done that better, how I could have communicated that, and a desire to make whatever necessary changes to be worthy of the opportunity to serve. And then the next thing I saw that was, I think, also crucial to public service is you went on to the next door. All right? Because however that conversation occurs, and I think Commissioner Dubach definitely vouch for the fact that there will be times where you have tough conversations, you have to keep going. And I think that was a crucial lesson that I learned about you, and I was very excited to have the opportunity to swear you in today. So can I have your help here? Can we hold the Bible for me, please? All right? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Rebecca Cheesem.
Aye, Rebecca Cheesem.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amanda? So one of the first lessons you learned at the 44th District Court is to never go after Judge Mineke. But I failed at that lesson again, so. I'll just say quickly, Amanda's a neighbor of ours and I'm going to put our street up against any other street in Royal Oak. We have the most leadership per block, I think. I don't know, do you want to use the Bible?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone want to help out?
Yeah.
That's a serious one. All right, you raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Amanda Herzog.
Amanda Herzog.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner.
Of City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Monica? Brought your own, all right. All right. Nice to see you again.
You too. Thank you.
Monica, if you raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Monica Hunt.
Monica Hunt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner.
Of City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Here we are again.
One last person.
Well, of course, I'm going to say something. What I'm particularly pleased about when it comes to the state of our community and the level of communication that exists amongst the leadership is the reality that although we have separate and distinct functions, the court, the city, but at the same point in time, the reality is that we're all working to the same goal. And that is to push this community to be elite, not elitist, elite, the very best in all ways. And the fact that Mayor Fournier and I talk regularly, that he never hesitates to reach out to the court if he has a question about anything, if we can help, provide information we have. And I think it's provided some great results in certain areas, particularly parking. And I think we've come a long way. When it comes to, when you look at other communities, there is a wall almost that's dropped between the different branches of government. And that's unfortunate. Yes, we have different functions. But if we have the line of communication open, we can respond quickly, decisively, and in a way that is consistent with our shared values. And that is that this is a great community made up of great people who all benefit when their leadership join together as one and move in the same common direction. So it's been a pleasure and a privilege to have your friendship. Even though we have different roles and functions, the goals are the same. And I'm grateful for that. So the fantastic Fournier family, if I, who's going to grab the, are we using the Bible? All right, good. All right. At the whole crew, it's a pretty heavy Bible, so I think everybody needs to. All right. I, Michael Fournier.
I, Michael Fournier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the Office of Mayor.
Of the Office of Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Well. Thank you, Judge Mineke, Judge Kolkowski. We appreciate you being here tonight. And I guess I'll do the official invitation to welcome the new commissioners to the 52nd Royal Oak City Commission. Come up here and. Dr. Herzog and Dr. Cheesem.
Just sit wherever, we're going to reshuffle.
Yeah. We will reshuffle by the next meeting.
We'll just reshuffle with perfect.
We've got as many doctors as we have lawyers now.
And we have one guy that sells car parts, so we're in pretty good shape.
We don't know what's going on.
No, they gave us two.
Well, this is good. Now, Dr. Herzog, is it going to be a thing that every week your notebook matches your jacket?
No.
No? Okay. I guess I'll just have, I guess I'll just have to be disappointed next meeting. All right. Well, this is pretty exciting. We have the 52nd Royal Oak City Commission sworn in. We're all seated and we're ready to hit the ground running to do some business this evening. So this brings us to a call to order. So I'm going to call to order the November 27, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. And. Yeah, I just want to take this in for a minute because I'm really proud of everybody that is up here today. And I'm so hopeful and excited about the things we're going to do together. And we have such great diverse set of backgrounds and experience up here that I think are going to make Royal Oak continue to be one of the best places to live in this country. So grateful for each of you, appreciate each of you. And it's really been a privilege and honor to serve the previous commission and I look forward to serving you in this commission. Commissioner Douglas.
I'm just happy to report that women have a super majority on the commission now. So watch out.
Ms. Davids, I think we're looking into the history, but this might be the first time in Royal Oak's history where we've had five commissioners, five female commissioners on the Royal Oak City Commission.
Susan, I'm talking to her. Judy.
She's on TikTok. So I think it is pretty historic, at least in my memory. I can't remember when, when this has happened. And so even more reason to be excited about the things we're going to do. Right? And we have Commissioner Colo.
Also, also.
Okay. Well, this is a little rocky, awkward start to begin the commission. Par for the course. I had everything for the send off to Kyle. I had nothing really prepared for the kickoff of the 52nd Royal Oak Commission. So I'm sort of winging it, but I think we can get to business here. We have the next item on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Did you, did you call a story?
I did call a story.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Douglas.
Will we approve the agenda?
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Okay. Second by Commissioner Hunt. All right. Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. Item 11, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening? Do a double look down this way.
Come on, it's a new commission, man.
Okay. All right, new times. No prejudgments.
That's the 50th commission to be.
So the consent agenda consists of the city commission meeting minutes from November 13th, confirmation of mayoral appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, claims from the 17th of November and November 28th, and the approval of the Royal Oak Community Fund grant Royal Oak Schools Foundation. Is there a motion? Commissioner Colo?
I move approval.
A move, a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to quickly mention we have a new Library Board trustee member on this item. We've heard a lot tonight about the importance of all terrorism and how much they're going to get back. So I just want to thank her for stepping up to do this. In addition, I want to recognize the Royal Oak School Foundation, which is the last recipient of some of our ARPA funding. So this is a great time for nonprofits in Royal Oak who are continuing to help our community.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Colo. Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now we're warming up. We're into item 12, which are organizational issues. So the first item we have here is the approval of the 2024 City Commission meeting schedule. Mr. Brake, do you want to open it up?
Absolutely.
It's all explanatory.
Well, it is, but there's some uniqueness. So good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the 52nd City Commission. So ordinarily, this body meets on the second and fourth Mondays. 2024 will be a unique year because there is three elections that will be held. So the calendar dates under that commitment, but there are three months where we will be switching to the first and third Mondays in February, March, and May. Then, of course, like what we will be going through in the month of December, where there'll be two meetings back to back. So just wanted to point out those variations of the meetings and it was detailed out by staff, the reasons for that to accommodate the elections as well as a certain spring break that is coming up in the school district. So this is recommended for your consideration for approval.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brake. In front of everyone at the table is a second proposed calendar. This kind of took any. Commissioner Dubbuck tried to steal yours. Sorry, Commissioner Herzog. So this calendar, after talking to a handful of people over the weekend, kind of looking at where the calendar stands, I know some of us have already started to plan based on our typical cadence of a two-four, the second and fourth Monday schedule. We also have a resolution last year avoiding school breaks and the third Monday in February is a school break. So if we adjust it slightly, it would allow us to keep that two-four cadence for a lot of the year, avoid that break. The only, I think the biggest hurdle that needs to overcome would be moving the second meeting in February to a Thursday. Talk to the clerk today that's not in precedent. It can happen. It's allowed. It would be Thursday, the 29th. So it could also be part of the only city commission to ever meet on February 29th. But this would allow us to avoid any election. It would allow us to avoid issues with potentially being around school breaks. And it would keep us pretty much on our same cadence. It also opens up some time in April and May for budget meetings. As we know, those tend to stack up on us pretty fast. So while there is a gap or two, the gap between April and May, that's a great time for budget meetings for us.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm especially interested in having the second meeting in the, or having our, it would be the first, anyway, our first meeting in February be on the 12th instead of the 5th. I have a vacation planned and I worked very hard to make sure I would only be missing one commission meeting. But this, the proposed schedule that we see here has me missing two in a row. And I'm hoping you will indulge me in avoiding that.
So just for, to make sure I understand, you, the February 12th is the issue.
I can't be here on February 5th.
You can't be here on February 5th, so you want, you can be, be here on the 12th?
As, as I anticipated would be our schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can be here on the 12th. And then with Commissioner Colo's recommendation, the week after, the 19th, would be probably problematic for one, two, three, five of us up here that have kids in Royal Oak Schools. And his suggestion was to say, okay, well, let's make that.
Thursday, February 29th.
Thursday, February 29th. So in February, we would have the 12th and the 29th based on the feedback of Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Colo combined. Commissioner Colo.
If I may, then, Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the agenda as I presented, calendar as I presented.
As presented with, does that, I'm trying to look at this. I mean, I appreciate the Excel sheet. I'm trying to understand it just real quick to make sure I understand it. Is that consider Commissioner Douglas's?
Correct.
Okay. So we'd have a meeting on the 12th, but as presented, you have one here on the 5th. So we'd scratch the 5th?
There's not one on the 5th in that one. Those are all the dates. That's every.
What does the blue mean?
The blue is the second and fourth Monday. And then it says new proposed date, yes, in the bar column. That would be the meeting date.
Could I ask, just for a favor, that might be easier?
Yeah.
Just so there's no misunderstanding. Could we just make the motion in deviation of what was presented to us? That might be a little easier to record for the clerk.
So let me, I can write that down really quick.
So it'd be, what was presented less the 5th?
Less the 5th with the addition of February 12th, less February 19th with the addition of February 29th.
Okay.
With the addition of March 11th, but less March 4th. And then with less May 6th with the addition of May 13th.
Okay.
And everything else is the same.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Now, there's no perfect way to, to do the calendar, you got to start with something.
Yep.
And then that's what we're here to do, is give feedback, and I don't see anybody really protesting these changes too much. It will be interesting to have a meeting on a Thursday. I'll have to, you know, program that into my brain that it's Thursday, get it into my calendar as opposed to the default. So any discussion on the motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have a calendar. Okay, this brings us to 12B, which is the appointment of the mayor pro tem. Commissioner Macy.
I think you mean Mayor Pro Tem Macy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Macy. Can't wait for this appointment.
So as the current mayor pro tem, I want to first thank this body for putting their trust in me to pick up the gavel when the mayor had to lay it down, and also to thank the mayor for occasionally giving me a few times to, to exercise that, and then also for everyone up here correcting me when I messed up during that. And it has been an honor to be the mayor pro tem and to get to step up and do some of the things in the mayor's absence. But I think with the arrival of this new commission, it's time for some new blood in the mayor pro tem seat, and I would like to nominate Commissioner Hunt, who has shown that she will be a steady hand, perhaps with fewer dad jokes at the podium.
I can help you with that.
But I think we could benefit a lot from her calm manner and her organized approach to this work, and so I would love to see her in this position, and I hope she will accept my nomination if it gets seconded.
We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. Commissioner Hunt. This is an important discussion point.
Well, I thank Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem Macy and Commissioner Douglas for seconding. For your, for your support and your belief in me and being able to do this position, this job, I am humbled and honored by your nomination. You know, I've had the opportunity to watch Commissioner Perushion, Mayor Pro Tem Macy do this job, and your incredible role models. And it's big shoes to fill, but I am grateful, and I accept the nomination.
I'll just say, Commissioner Macy, thank you for stepping in and covering for me on countless occasions, both at this table, when illness or business travel required, and also for some of those 6:00 AM news interviews that I had an important meeting to do and I couldn't make.
Wait, what?
You've already accepted the nomination, Commissioner Hunt. And, you know, you did a really good job, and I think represented the city well, and I think at one point in time you did get a promotion.
They called me mayor on TV.
Yeah. And it's like, ooh, this is kind of good.
Get that screenshot.
And, you know, it's, it's a tough thing to do on a moment's notice when, you know, I do this day in and day out, and I still make mistakes all the time, and for you to step in with, you know, without that experience curve from time to time, to jump in to keep the meetings going, I'm really grateful for your service, and you did a wonderful job. Thank you. Commissioner Hunt, soon to be Mayor Pro Tem Hunt, I think you're going to do an outstanding job. I'm so excited and, and glad that our colleagues nominated you to be Mayor Pro Tem. Cool, calm demeanor, brilliant, beyond reproach, and certainly where you are lacking in the dad joke area, I think that, you know, with a few, you know, after-commission meeting tutorial sessions, I can really help you fill this seat when needed in a way that, you know, no one would even know I wasn't here, so.
Up for the challenge.
And as far as those 6:00 AM interviews, don't worry, I think Commissioner Macy's got those covered anyways. It's perfect. So with that, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Item 12C, approval of the performance bond.
This is coverage that's provided by our insurance carrier, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association, or MMRMA, and this is a routine coverage, but nevertheless, since we have new individuals, for the commission to convey approval of the faithful performance bond, the amount of $1 million that, that covers the, each member of this commission. So there is a resolution that is presented, recommended for your consideration and approval.
Any questions for Mr. Bray? Any motions? Mr. Hunt?
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hunt, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. All right, our vote is our bond. All right. I'll call for our vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to item 12D, which is the adoption of rules of procedure.
The rules and procedures are what governs the practice of, to assemble decorum and a business-like proceedings. In the last city commission session, that there was thorough consideration of additional adjustments, and that's been reaffirmed. So the, the recommendation is to maintain this most recent iteration of the rules of procedures as, as presented for your consideration for approval.
Questions for Mr. Bray? Is there a motion to adopt the rules of procedure? A motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on the rules of procedure. All right, with no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. We're organized. We have mayor pro tem, we have rules, we got a meeting schedule, we got bonds. So we're good. All right. So that brings us to item 13, which is approval of mayoral city commission assignments. So I appreciate each of you giving me your top three-ish, Commissioner Macy, your top six-ish desires for boards and commissions. I did my best to place you each in a role that was of your preference, but also where I thought that you will excel and bring your experience and talents to a heightened level. And so I think I reached out to all of you with what assignments you had. I didn't hear too much pushback, a little pushback, but not a lot of pushback. So this list here is a list of the appointments. You guys are welcome to talk about it, you're welcome to make a motion. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, I have a quick question for you. Currently, the appointments committee is composed of Commissioner Hunt, myself, and just departed Commissioner DeBuck. Would it be appropriate tonight to add another attendee to that committee so that we can do the work of appointments in the month of December?
Good point. Yeah, I think that might be helpful to do that tonight. How do you want to go about it, Commissioner Colo?
Oh, I don't sit in that big chair, Mr. Mayor. This is, you can play eeny, meeny, miny, moe. Rock, paper, scissors.
All right. Does anyone want to volunteer to, to join the appointments committee?
It rotates again in January.
Yeah, rotate, it rotates every, is it every six months?
Three.
Three, every quarter.
Four.
Every four months.
Every four months, that's right.
I'll volunteer.
Okay. We have Commissioner Herzog added to that appointments committee, and then what we'll do is flip it the next time around. We usually, traditionally had done it like one side of the table or the other, but, but no, no, it's, 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 um, doesn't actually matter.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
So you'll be fine.
Or am I always?
I don't know, I'm kind of liking this. I love the matching notebook and jacket, it's. Okay. So why don't you make that in the form of a motion now that we have a volunteer?
Sure. I approve the recommendations of the mayor's appointments to city commission assignments, the addition of Commissioner Herzog to the appointments committee.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second?
You guys doing this for Kyle?
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Sir, the meeting's up here.
Chief.
All right, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So this brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of the Oakland County Parks Community Park and Trail Capital Grant Program Agreement. Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in August, we received the official award of the, from Oakland County Parks, informing us that the city would be the recipient, that the Community Park and Trail Capital Grant for the Hamer Finch Wilkins Park Improvements. This park improvements is totaling over $100,000, which the city is providing a match of $50,000 to match the, the county grant. And so because of staff turnover with Oakland County, that it took time for them to finalize the paperwork, so it is before you, and I think it's rather fitting to celebrate a success on the first night of the 52nd City Commission. So important to bring that before you, and, and this will be a celebration that we all join in. My understanding is sometime in the month of May, for a date to be determined, and Judy Davis is in, in charge of the weather, so it's, it'll be a beautiful day. So that's, this, the official grant contract is presented, the approval, and also thanks to Oakland County Parks for providing us this resource to be able to finish this important project. So there's a resolution that's presented for your consideration for approval at this evening's meeting.
Questions for Mr. Bray? No questions? Is there a motion for the resolutions as presented? Commissioner Colo?
I move approval.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right, discussion. Commissioner Colo.
I just want to thank Oakland County Parks and former Parks Commissioner, new city Commissioner, Amanda Herzog, for this morning.
Any other comments? I would say, really exciting to see this park take off. A lot of effort from a lot of folks, including our own Judy Davis, city staff, grant coordinators, folks that serve up here today, and clearly Oakland County. This is really going to be, we know it's special, but when this park is complete and people can walk through it and see it and learn the story of some of our first settlers, I think it's going to be something that the entire area is going to celebrate and enjoy, not just our city. So I'm glad we're keeping the traction, I'm glad we keep moving forward, I'm glad we're finding a way to fund this, and just can't wait for that ribbon cutting here in the spring. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Macy?
It's a moot.
I was trying. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. All right. Any discussion on this very important motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We're adjourned.[1794.33]